Okay, we're on record. We're on record.
Good evening. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 et cetera of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Roll call please, Mr. Jolli.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Not here.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to say him. Mr. Toskowitz.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Mr. Reddy.
Yes.
Mr. Willens.
Here.
Chairwoman Grignani.
Here.
We have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Frozen.
Our board engineer, Mr. Lamontowicz.
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Would you please join us in standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
For the record, Mr. Petty's here.
Mr. Chadwick, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Mr. Lamontowicz, do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
The meeting is open to the general public. Agenda. Application 2310, we're doing ColoGIC. Application 2460, ColoGIC 200, Wevero Road, Block 737, Lot 2Z, SED-5A. A minor site plan with D variance for fuel, storage capacity, paving, and striping.
Good evening, everybody. Joseph O'Neill, Pierre-Carlo O'Neill, here on behalf of the applicant, ColoGIC. What ColoGIC is basically is a data center. They're an existing data center down on Wevero by Lincoln Church. What they're looking to do is they're looking to expand the capacity of the generators, backup generators. And that, of course, necessitates storing fuel. And this is a Tier 2 wellhead connection. But for that reason, we are here for you this evening for the storage of the fuel. I had a big presentation prepared when we were scheduled the other night, but we have only a half hour, so I now have a very small and off-point presentation prepared. ColoGIC is a wonderful company. It does data storage there. They take a lot of pride in what they do. The site is very secure. And with that, I'd like to go right into description of the tanks themselves, which is probably what everybody would want to hear about. So I do that.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear.
Can you state your name, spell your last name, please?
Yes, my name is John Jacobs. J is E-O-B-S.
Mr. Jacobs, can you give the board, please, the benefit of your experience?
Yes, I am an architect with a company called Corgan. I have been designing data centers almost exclusively for the last 17 years. We've performed work all across the country and even globally. ColoGIC is a client of ours. We've deployed facilities for them in multiple states, and we're doing work within this legacy facility at Wevero Road.
I would submit Mr. Jacobs is an expert for architectural purposes this evening.
Appears to be qualified.
Mr. Jacobs, could you please describe to the board what exactly we are doing here on site or proposing?
Sure. So, the facility being a data center, the client's customer requirements involve maintaining power and connectivity for their servers and IT equipment. If there should be an electrical failure with the utility grid, they would require generator backup for those purposes to maintain operations continuously. The way that we deploy generators for ColoGICs, they have an engine, a diesel engine for backup power. It's mounted on top of a fuel storage tank. We refer to colloquially as a belly tank. And that is what we're proposing for this particular site. The construction of the belly tank is double-walled, so there's a primary storage tank, there's an outer tank. Should there be any kind of leak within the primary tank itself, unlikely, but again, just for safety reasons and also for the cost of diesel fuel, our clients are highly motivated to ensure that there isn't a leak. As a tertiary measure for this particular facility, all of these belly tanks are being located within a sump, so that is actually a slab depression within the building footprint itself where these tanks will be stored, and then all diesel storage will be essentially within the envelope of the building and not out on the site.
So it's indoors?
That is correct.
Now, these are not pressurized?
Correct. So we refer to these tanks as atmospheric, and what that means is the fuel within the tanks is under no more pressure than, say, water within a glass sitting on your table. The contents are not pressurized. Diesel is flammable, but it is not explosive like gasoline. It requires compression for it to combust. So if you're familiar with diesel engines, it requires a lot of pressure within the piston to actually achieve combustion. So in this case, it's actually pretty safe, well-known, and then we've also classified the building appropriately for the storage of diesel for building construction purposes.
Noise levels?
I beg your pardon?
Noise.
There is noise, however, there is sound attenuation on the generator, so there's a muffler that would go with the gin set, and then it exhausts upward and outward. So if you look at the existing building, there are actually legacy generators. We have, I kind of call them stingers, but they're essentially an exhaust pipe that comes up and then goes up above the building, so it's not necessarily just blasting noise at the property boundary. And then also, the site is bounded by commercial properties on all sides of the building.
Is there a requirement for any kind of fire suppression system?
There is. So there is actually a fire suppression system within the generator plant room. So what our clients deploy is what we refer to as a double interlock pre-action system. So these are systems that remain dry. The pipes don't have water in them. They don't charge until there's actually an alarm or a need for that to occur, but there will be fire suppression within that space.
And water will go into the system when required?
That's correct.
Okay.
When the system alarms, pipes are charged, and then heads fused to release water within that space.
How often do you have to exercise these?
Generators are required to be exercised potentially monthly or bimonthly. Depends on the maintenance scheme that the client adopts. The other part that limits this is there are actually federal emissions requirements that restrict the amount of runtime for generators outside of emergency operations. So they're not running constantly. Usually, I think in most cases, you'll see them run once a month, and they might run them for, you know, 20, 30 minutes, again, just to make sure that the engines are in working order. That's to make sure that when there is a power failure, the engines will reliably start and deliver power to the client.
Daytime exercise, I assume?
Daytime exercise, yeah. We don't want to do it at midnight. I think most staff are present during the day.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on the information that was given by this gentleman tonight?
I just have just one more question.
Surely.
How many generators are we proposing?
We are proposing, in this tranche of work, six generators in total.
How many total generators would be on site?
Oh, I'd have to go back and count again. But we did do a quantity takeoff of the fuel that's on site, so basically with this variance that we're requesting, we bring the total storage of the facility to 54,500 gallons of diesel on site.
That's with the 36,000 additional.
Correct.
That's the total storage on site.
Correct, yes.
And the fact that it's stored inside, I guess is a little weird to me, but that's a common practice?
It's, so, it was a very common practice, I'd say about 10 to 12 years ago, to have diesel storage that was within kind of entirely contained underground or indoor diesel storage. More commonly now, generators are actually deployed outside the building, but in this particular case, because of the site constraints and the way that this building was designed, it's kind of a legacy design from about a decade ago. So fuel is going inside, and that's actually how this facility has been deployed with all of the previous phases as well.
And with your expertise, you wouldn't consider this any more dangerous than outside, or would you?
No, I wouldn't, because, again, the gas itself, I should say, the diesel, excuse me, while it is flammable, it is not of an excessive quantity for building code.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you were building that structure today, would you build it inside or outside? What would be preferable?
We would build it outside, but not because of safety, it'd be more out of economy. So it's
Out of what?
Out of economy. It's just cheaper to locate the generators outside the building, on a site, on a pad. Putting them inside the facility actually costs more time and money. Building this sump is actually going to be a bit of a burden for this client, but in this case, it's the right choice for this particular site.
Because they're already there.
You're taking up space, basically, you say.
Exactly right.
Thank you. No further questions.
Other questions? Are there any other questions from the board? Someone like to
Did you ask for questions?
Oh, sorry, I think I did.
You did?
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to ask questions of this witness on his testimony only? See none? Would someone like to frame a resolution, please?
(inaudible).
No, I don't have any further questions.
I've got some site questions, if your site engineer is present.
Yes, you can bring him up for questions. Do you want to come up? One of the guests for you.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, please.
My name is Joseph Yenucci, last name spelled Y-A-N-N-U-C-C-I.
Can you give the board, please, your qualifications?
Sure, I'm an associate principal with Langin Engineering Environmental Services, located right here in Parsippany. I've been with the firm for 24 years and been practicing civil engineering the entire time.
Your licenses are all current?
Yes.
I would say begin as an expert for engineering, appears to be qualified, and you're familiar with the reports prepared in association with this application?
Yes.
I believe we have a question.
With respect to the outside facilities in the back, in the corner there, what we see as footprint, how big or how tall are those units?
Sure, I'll give a two-minute overview of what the improvements are happening outside of the building that I'm responsible for. There are proposed six new transformers located in this corner of the rear of the property. I'm going to zoom in here. Here are the six transformers. That is really the only new equipment that is happening on-site outside of the building. There will be new concrete, underground concrete duct banks going from each transformer back into the building. So we are digging a bit of a pit here to locate all these underground conduits located within the existing asphalt area. We are not altering the current limits of the vehicular use area. All the maneuvering, vehicular maneuvering back here will be made as-is. The transformers will sit in concrete pads, and I believe your question is how high are these transformers?
Correct.
They don't actually have the
(inaudible)
I believe they're 6 feet. 6 feet? Approximately 6 feet high.
They're all the same height? It looks different on the chart.
The transformers are located here, and they would all be the same size and height.
What's the biography looking at above those?
I'm sorry, sir?
The biography that goes above that, what's that?
It's the conduits to the ground.
The conduits, that's all underground?
That's all underground.
Got it, thank you. That's about all.
And you're going to have a fence or some sort of protection around this, around them, that they're not going to be exposed to the, you'll have a fence or some sort of
There's an existing fence in the rear of the property.
Okay.
But there will be bollards placed in front to protect them from
Excellent, okay, thank you.
Now, that area is elevated right now, is that going to be brought down to pavement level? Are you leaving it up there?
So there's, we're stepping the transformers. There is about a two-to-three-foot elevation difference from the asphalt to where the back of the property is, so we will be proposing some minor grading to flatten the area that's stepped up. I believe the (inaudible) which is the elevation of the concrete slab is about 18 inches higher than the asphalt. I'll confirm that in two seconds.
And just for the boards, I have a memo October 7th that the town engineer has already reviewed the saw moving permit for this, so that's already in hand. The other issue that I have, one of the issues I have is that in prior applications, there was one in One Sylvan for a generator, the generator was considered an accessory structure. If this is, if these transformers are considered accessory structures, is variance required? So I'm not sure how that, because there are
I don't think we have any precedent on determination of a transformer, however, the way I read the land use law, they talk about a structure can be on or below the ground, which would bring tanks into the being. Based on Jennifer's interpretation of the ordinance, I think it is an accessory structure.
The transformers? The tanks are in the building, we're talking about the transformers.
This is equipment.
Yeah. Do you consider air conditioner equipment accessory structures?
Yes, she does.
I believe the terminology was the generator was considered an accessory structure, but there was no mention of the transformers. These are transformers back here, the generators are inside.
Did you meet with the zoning officer and discuss that?
No, we didn't, I did not.
Well, I misunderstood what you just said.
There is a letter somewhere that mentions the generators being considered an accessory structure, but the generators are located
In the building. But there's no discussion on the transformers.
Well, seeing that
You know, they're somewhat unique. I mean, there are transformers that are on commercial property because they needed the power source. And I don't recall ever dealing with a transformer that was considered an accessory structure.
No, I believe equipment is not considered accessory structures.
The town does consider air conditioners. We've had a number of cases this year where people changed old air conditioners, but no one's in the same location, and we dealt with them. Real quickly. Yeah. So why do we do this? My interpretation is after discussion that it is not a power facility that it would be normal in this type of use.
I don't disagree with that.
The other item is, there's a roll-off container in the parking lot. Is that going to be removed?
It's already removed.
The increased impervious cover triggers under 225-98 a minor development for stormwater. Have you looked into that at all, is how you want to address that?
Sure. So our plan to address that is to remove four existing parking spaces to provide a net zero impervious surface. Right now, there's about 621 square feet of new impervious surface being generated by the six new transformer pads. That was the nature of the comment, so in an effort to eliminate that, we're looking to eliminate four existing parking spaces.
What is the required parking versus parking on site now versus
The site is significantly overparked. Right now, the provided parking is 92 parking spaces. The required parking is 13. So we have plenty of opportunity to reduce the parking spaces.
And the required is based upon the ordinance?
Correct. Number of planned employees, number of managerial personnel, number of vehicles stationed at the site. It was always on current operational needs at 13.
There were some numbers in the Burgess Report. Spill prevention counter, the spill prevention control and countermeasure plan appears to indicate that the current fuel storage is 15,00584, and the current oil storage is 2,081. So the prior town branch permitted 4,000 gallons of fuel, and again, the plan says there's 15,000 now, and we're going up to 36. So I guess my question is, are we adding 36 to 4,000, or are we adding 36 to 15,000?
We're adding 36. There was an error in the prior approval that it didn't take into account existing fuel storage. That was supposed to be an additive number. So the number we just provided to you was total fuel storage on site, so let's not make that mistake. That's why I did it that particular way. 36,000, it's the additional fuel storage, and that other number was, repeat that again, try to
The total fuel storage was 54,458 gallons.
So that's total fuel storage on site.
What was that number?
54,458.
Because I didn't, I don't remember seeing that number, but that's, so we're almost 55,000 gallons of fuel. And just, the applicant should update that plan if there's approval, all the fuel numbers are changed, so that plan's going to have to be updated.
We will do so.
And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Update the spill plan?
Sorry?
Update the spill plan, is that
It's called the Spill Prevention Control and Countermeasure Plan.
I will include that language.
Any other questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public in regard to the testimony from this gentleman only? See none? Would someone like to form a
(inaudible)
Thank you, thank you. Are there any comments for or against this application?
And you had no witnesses.
No, I wrote
And no other witnesses. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
So I think that you've answered for me any concerns about safety. You have an ongoing business that needs to prepare for the future, and it seems de minimis in nature, so I will be voting for it.
Thank you.
Want me to keep going?
Yep.
Yes, please.
Application 24:60, ColoGICs, 200 Wevero Road, Block 737, Lot 2, Zone SED-5A. Minor site plan granted W with a D variance for fuel storage capacity, paving, and striping. Do we need any of the language in there, Mr. Johnson?
We're going to remove four parking spaces.
Removing four parking spacing and adding the proper fuel number?
And the update of the spill prevention plan.
And an update of the fuel spillage prevention plan.
Toskowitz?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Reddy?
Yes.
Willens?
Yep.
Grignani?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Your resolution will be, is approved and will be approved at the upcoming meeting and mailed to you within 10 days, and you can then apply for your zoning and construction permits. Thank you. Application 2310, Klein Outdoor Advertising LLC, 99 Fanny Road, Block 449, Lot 1, Zone SED 3, site plan with CD variance to construct a billboard.
Okay.
Good evening once again, everybody. Joseph O'Neill, Pierre-Carlo O'Neill, here on behalf of the client on this continuing matter. We are here this evening with additional exhibits showing the board produced visual impact of the proposed sign with elements being incorporated that basically limit the view to the side. I think we can provide, show you a very clear exhibit if we just take two seconds to get this a little faster. Again, it's Mr. Vogt, who's previously sworn and qualified.
Your statement still in the room, correct?
Yes.
Still licensed in New Jersey, Mr. Vogt?
Ah, yeah.
So why don't you walk through what we've got here now?
Sure. Good evening.
Good evening.
Sure, to the right is our site plan rendering that was testified at our previous hearing. I believe that's Exhibit A2. And on the left is our new exhibit showing some of the lighting proposed for the billboard and the viewing angles. I can label that a new exhibit for you.
So that was not part of the package they came in, right?
That was not part of the package.
That's Exhibit A3 now.
It's definitely, we had an A3.
We had, we had other ones before.
We had an A3, we had an A4.
I think we were all the way up to nine.
I think we were up to nine. Yeah, I have a note on an A8, so I think you're right. I think we're A9.
A9, yeah.
Take it A9.
Okay, so A9
A10.
A10, okay. A10, okay, so A10 is an aerial view of the property with the location of the billboard located in the middle. It's basically the red dot. I have smaller handouts, if that's easier for the board, if you'd like to have them in front of you.
Please?
Yeah, why don't we
Sure.
Take a moment.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure, so this Exhibit A10, while that's being passed out, it's labeled EX-02. It's aerial view exhibit rotated, and it has a date of 8/7/2024.
What are we looking at?
Sure, so
Give them a minute.
Okay.
John, how does this relate to the
Okay, so to the top of the page is north, to the bottom of the page is south. What we did is we superimposed the billboard location on the aerial, and we presented the angles out from the face of the board. And what we're using with this billboard's technology is a light mitigation screen. So it limits the viewing angle to a 30-degree viewing angle on each side. Okay? So it goes out, you go out 30 degrees from center on each side, so it's a 60-degree viewing angle from left to right on both sides, as opposed to as opposed to it being almost double that, 120 degrees. So we're limiting that down to half the size. So what we did is we basically grayed out, what you see in a dark color is beyond the 30-degree mark where the screen goes black, and you cannot see it from your viewing angle. So all of the properties that are in the dark hatched areas are beyond the 30-degree viewing angle and will not see the message on the billboard face.
It's dark, actually.
Yes, it's dark.
So you won't see any residual light, is that what you're saying?
You won't see any residual light beyond the 30 degrees. You may see the structure itself, but not the message.
Now, I noticed down bottom on this exhibit, around Intervale Road, there's still some houses in the lighted area. About how far away are those houses?
Sure, so those rings that are on the page, they go out in increments of 100 feet. So the last ring is 500 feet, just as a scale reference. So if I, if I come down
It's over 1,000 feet away.
You're at easily 1,000 feet to Intervale Road. Sure.
There are trees.
I received in the, as a result of a question with Mr. O'Neill, an aerial photograph. Do you know Do you know, Mr. O'Neill, when this was previously provided?
I do not believe that was previously provided. That was not at my request. I was told a...
I did not make copies of it. I'm gonna send it down to the board and maybe just quickly look at it because...
Sure, do you wanna, do you wanna see that?
I consider it as a houses across Intervale.
I do have handouts of that as well.
Why don't you just put that up as opposed to...
You got a handout?
Little one around.
Uh, yeah, the handouts.
Yeah, we've got some.
Oh, you got a handout?
And this is A eleven, correct?
This will be A eleven.
The reason I interrupted their presentation is because I had some concern, and I think you came about this prior meeting about the impact to the Intervale Road neighborhood. But I think a thousand-foot separation with the stipulations they put on, I'm satisfied.
So while that exhibit A eleven is being passed out, that again is another aerial photograph, very similar to A ten. And what we did is, you'll see, there's a white line that shows a distance from the point of the billboard location on the subject lot and then down to Intervale Road. And if you look close enough, and I can read it to you because I know it is small, where the end of that line is, the distance from the billboard is one thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven feet approximately. So you're definitely at the thousand-foot and better mark.
And it's going through multiple properties, multiple areas of trees?
Over a building.
Over a building.
Buildings.
Correct.
Right, right.
Correct. And what I also did on exhibit A ten, I put elevation numbers on those drawings. So you'll see little flags that have elevations on them. So our billboard, the ground level underneath the sign, is elevation four zero one, so four hundred and one. Intervale Road, I have a, I have a leader going down there. It varies anywhere between elevation three eighty-nine to three ninety-five. So it is several feet lower than our existing property. And then I have other elevations throughout, scattered throughout, just to give you an idea of what the different elevations are on the surrounding property.
Mr. Chadwick, you're comfortable that this is gonna have next to no effect on any residential?
Correct.
Okay.
Before the meeting, I made a point of going up again and looking at it after having received what is now A eleven.
Okay, great.
And what I, what I also did on this exhibit is the, the northbound side or the left-hand, the left-hand read, what I did to take it farther out of view from the residential development is I basically took the angle off of that face. So the sign had a V. On that one side, I just made it a flat face, so it pulls the viewing angle farther out from that condo complex. Townhouse complex.
Is that change shown on any submitted plan?
It is not, but I can certainly...
I think we should write it on the site plan.
Sure.
The angle of the billboard it inspects. But with the other thing, besides the thirty degrees, you said you were putting something on the bill... Were you putting wings on the billboard or no?
No, it's the light mitigation technology on the board limits the viewing angle. It's already on the board itself.
Are these bookbogs inset into the board?
That's correct. We had shown a video, for those who were here, at a prior application. Basically, what they do is they recess the diodes into the face of the billboard, and it basically acts as a houseside shield, if that terminology rings a bell with standard lighting that you would have in a site.
It was the drone, did you, right?
On the site, on the site plan, why don't you put that in the base so we can check it? Hopefully, the building department gets it.
Sure, I can certainly do that. It's a very simple change on the site plan.
Any additional questions from the board? Anyone in the public have any questions of this gentleman and his testimony only?
Did you have any questions? Any more questions?
No.
Okay, sorry.
Mr. O'Neill, do you have any other?
We do not.
Any other gentlemen's that would like to talk? No? Okay, speak.
Thank you.
Would some would like to frame a resolution, please?
Can I just interrupt?
Yes, definitely.
You got all the planning testimony in at the last hearing, right?
I believe you did, yes.
Okay. So I think because you have adapted the plan to the concerns of the board and the people, I will be voting for this. Do you want me to continue?
Please.
Okay. Why not?
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh... It's this law one?
Which one?
Application twenty-three colon ten, Klein Outdoor Advertising LLC, ninety-nine Fanny Road, block four forty-nine, lot one, zone S C D dash three. Recommend granting a site plan with a C and D variance to construct a billboard. Do we need any other language, Mr. Johnson?
I just wanna confirm. You removed the requirement for a height variance, right? You're no longer looking for a height variance, is that? You still are looking for the height variance, right? Okay, gotcha.
Would you reduce that?
Like five feet, right?
No, no.
No, the height is...
From the original submission?
No, the, the height, the height is sixty feet on that board.
Wasn't it higher than that when you started?
It was higher, it was higher. We were playing around with it.
All right, sure, it's sixty feet.
It's sixty feet. We were playing around with a couple different heights and...
Nope, that's it, sixty feet. Thank you, sir.
Sixty feet, thank you.
Okay. We're good.
Did you need, I'm sorry, did you need any site, any C variances at all? Or just the, the D for the use and the D six for the height? Did, I don't think you needed any, did you ask for any Cs? I just wanna make sure we're clear.
Because it says C here.
Yeah.
We do as proceeds.
Yeah, because you're, you're obviously in the rear yard setback.
I just wanna make sure I have everything correct in the resolution.
I'll get it for you.
Yes, there was a rear yard of five feet where fifty feet is, is required, required.
So the C variance stands in...
Yes.
Okay, so it's the use, the height, and the rear yard setback?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second, ready?
That's it?
Second.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Patty.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Willans.
Yep.
Yes.
After you voted all over the standard community participation that was discussed
way back when, our part of this approval. Access by the municipality and nonprofit groups in town. And we give it a dedicated number to call for their messages and their message being carried by the company. And all the conditions that we discussed about light mitigation, et cetera, are all included.
I'll send Mr. O'Neill a draft resolution for he and I to make sure that we've captured everything that was discussed both at this meeting and the last meeting.
Yeah, well, we're, I have language about the contact information. Make sure it's on the resolution.
Mr. O'Neill, your resolution will be approved at the upcoming meeting and mailed to you within ten days. You can then apply for your zoning and construction permits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, can we do a closed session now?
Yeah, we can.
Want to go into the next meeting?
Sure, we can have that conversation.
Efficiency, sir.
Okay.
Love good sports on...
We can't do the seven thirty meeting yet.
Oh, okay.
Okay, but I'm gonna ask you to read something so that we can have a discussion about a matter that was...
We're gonna excuse the public.
We need to close the room off?
We need to close the room. I'm on your agenda. I'm throwing you a curveball.
Please, I don't have any curveballs. I'm still in the learning phase.
Okay. What are you gonna read? You're not gonna say Pacific Outdoor, you're gonna say Danny Realtor. It was gonna be today. Good night, Mr. O'Neill. No. I would agree.
You want me to shut the door? You want me to shut the door?
Sure.
Mr. O'Neill, thank you. Mr. O'Neill is doing it.
It's closed.
It's closed. You gotta read the thing and then...
Yeah, she's gotta read, yeah, she's gotta read this first.
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, P L nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one... I know, after they, we go in the session, I'll go... Thank you, Jeff, appreciate that. ...permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the township of Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Adjustment is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist. And whereas the township of Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Adjustment wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege regarding Danny Realtor, P T H B O A. And whereas minutes will be kept and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved by the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Adjustment that the public be excluded from this meeting. Do I need a vote on this?
Yes.
Vote, please.
Aye.
Second?
Aye.
Mr. De, Willans?
Yes.
Grignani, yes?
Yes, Santosh. Yes.
Okay, you're in executive session.
Thank you.
You can open the door? Okay, all right.
We're only gonna hear one. John is the home, where is that? You need to do one of their thing.
Okay. I already had, would you invite him in?
November sixth is... Twenty-four fifty-seven. Atchina Cone, I don't know, Seraconey?
And it was a weird day. It was a day here and a half. And they were concerned about parking, and it was in West... And they got agreement to put the church next door. During the weekdays, they were gonna lease parking spaces at the church. For parking, that is four years of the day.
I guess.
Get on record.
So now the rest of the places loaded again. Did, no else?
Just a pledge of allegiance.
You don't have to.
Prefer that begins at the seventh meeting.
Somebody will be lucky in the final.
Yeah, okay, here we go.
Pledge of allegiance was said at our previous meeting. This meeting is open to the general public if they would like to speak about anything not on tonight's agenda. See no one? Correspondence, please, Nora?
Yep, we have correspondence received from Zachary Ziren Seon. Request an application twenty-four fifty-seven, thirty-two Asbury Place, block sixty-three, lot two, be carried from October ninth, twenty twenty-four, to November sixth, twenty twenty-four, without further notice, except for the public utilities within the township. Correspondence from Michael Miey. Request an application twenty-four thirty-six, twenty-sixth Avenue, block five, sixty-two, lot sixteen, be carried from October ninth, twenty twenty-four, to December fourth, twenty twenty-four, without further notice, and with the grant of any necessary extensions through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, for the board to make decision on the case. Lastly, we have correspondence from, received from Ursula Leo of Lady Clark Ryan. Request an application twenty-three twenty-seven, three twenty-eight Kingston Road, block two eleven, lot eleven, be carried from October ninth, twenty twenty-four, to February twelfth, twenty twenty-five, without further notice, and grants an extension for the board to make decision on the case through February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Nora, I'm going to ask for a vote on application twenty-four fifty-one and twenty-four fifty-six. Application twenty-four fifty-one, James Farley, two seventy-five Lakes Door Drive, block five eighty-one, lot thirty, zone R four, for a C variance to construct an open deck with stairs contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, column thirteen. An application twenty-four fifty-six, A two Z R X LLC, one twenty-two North Webwick Road, block five thirteen, lot twenty-nine, zone B five, D variance for a pharmasude, pharmasude, pharmasude...
Pharmacy.
Pharmacy, thank you, pharmacy.
Second, Jaskowitz.
Who was the, who made the motion?
The chairman. Chairman.
Okay. Jaskowitz?
Yep.
Patty?
Yes.
Reddy?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes. Thank you. Outdoor, application nineteen twenty-one, Pacific Outdoor Advertising, two ninety-nine Littleton Road, block three ninety-five, lot one, zone B two. Preliminary and final major site plan with C D variance to construct the billboard with the proposed modifications from the original application as follows. The height of the billboard structure shall be reduced by five feet for a total height not to exceed fifty-five feet. Only the eastern-facing or right-facing billboard shall be static and the traditional billboard with traditional lighting to be turned off at midnight and turned back on no later than six A M. The other side shall remain a digital billboard as proposed with conical lights to diminish the dis- dispersment of lights and impact on surrounding neighborhoods. The billboard shall be equipped with the appropriate technology necessary to limit visibility from the site.
You're asking for that motion, correct?
Yes. May we have a motion, please?
Want a motion? Second.
Jaskowitz?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Reddy?
That's that. Excuse me?
Did I go ahead that first?
With the chair.
Okay, all right, thank you. Application twenty-four fifty-two, Mr. Kasawala. Two seventy-five Beechwood Road, block two oh three, lot one point zero two, row, zone R three, C variance to construct a new two-story, single-family dwelling with attached garage, covered porch, and open deck with stairs contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, column three, and section four thirty dash two seventy-five H. Good evening.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth?
I do, thanks.
Can you state your name and spell your first and last name, please?
First name Nakul, N A K U L. Last name Kasawala, K A S A B W A L A.
Thank you, you can receive it.
Thanks.
Please?
Sure.
Tell avoid why you would like to have this application approved for your home?
Yeah, so basically, this lot is in R three zone. It is complying from all the angles other than the front width of the lot. As per the R three zone, it needs hundred feet, and the lot is ninety-one point eight eight feet. So that's the one of the variants. And the other is, I'm making a three-car garage there. So maximum allowed in the front is twenty-four feet, and I'm requesting the thirty feet there. One of the reasons is like two oh two is near there, and in front of it, there's a school. So I want a broader driveway to enter and exit as such. So those are the two requests for the variants.
Two variants, gee. Is there a house on your north side of your property, the other side from school?
So basically, if I'm facing the house, on the right side is the Board of Education property. And on the left side, there is another lot, and after that, there is a house, and immediately two oh two comes.
Is there a house on that lot?
On the left, no, there is no house, just no.
There's no house, no. It's awakened lot?
It's awakened lot. It's a vacant lot.
Are there any questions? Is that, oh, that's your testimony, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions from the board on this application?
I just have one. So your, the one issue you have is the three-character cars, is that the issue you're looking at? And you need that because of what? You didn't tell us why you need it.
Because if the multiple car is parked there, the entry becomes small, and I want enough parking space. And another thing is, the right-of-way is not ten-tooth, it's very deep. I think it's 20 or 30 feet there. So the front entrance will be narrowed to 24 feet, and then it will expand to 30 feet as such because of the three-car garage. So I thought that if I can get the 30-feet straight line, it will be helpful from the car movement perspective, and the.
Let's start that over. The driveway, when it connects to Beechwood, will be 24 feet wide?
Yes, so it's allowed.
Then it'll widen out as you go back to your property, is that what you're saying?
Yes, so by default, it is allowed 24 feet. But when I go in, there are three-car garages, so the driveway will be wide for the three-car garage, so it will be 30 feet. So I thought that if I can make from the front 30 feet, it will be more helpful.
You want to keep it, you don't want 30 feet.
Exactly.
Do you have any questions on the board?
No.
Of this witness? I don't see anyone in the public to ask questions. Any other questions from the board?
Nope.
Would a member like to frame a resolution, please? Mr. Josh Woods?
Sure, this is a request is the minimus in nature, he's building a nice home. We're not really bothering anybody, so I'll be voting for it. So, Application 24, Callum 52, Nakil Kasadwala, 275 Beechwood Road, Block 203, Lot 1.02, Zone R-3, recommend granting a C variance to construct a new two-story, single-family dwelling with attached garage, covered porch, and open deck with stairs contrary to Sections 430-35, Columns 3, and Section 430-275H.
Second, Patty?
Josh Woods?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Willan?
Yep.
Grignani?
Yes. Sir, your application is approved at the upcoming meeting, and it will be mailed to you. And within 10 days, you'll get your approval, and you can then apply for your construction and zoning permits, okay?
Thank you very much, really appreciate that.
Lots of luck.
Wonderful.
Lots of luck, sir.
Good luck.
We have a motion to close the meeting?
Some more? Second?
Well, the other two on the agenda, what's the deal on them? Did we carry them, or did I miss something?